All right. At this time, I'd like to call together the regularly scheduled meeting for the City of Taft Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. We're meeting at City Hall Chambers, 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 29-20, Taft Planning Commission meetings will be held in the following manner. One, in order to protect the constituents, city officials, and city staff at all public meetings until further notice, will be held closed to the public. Planning Commission meetings will be, excuse me, livestreamed in real time to our YouTube channel by searching for City of Taft Clerk on your YouTube or at this link, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot com dot user, excuse me, forward slash user, forward slash City of Taft. Item number two, public comments for Planning Commission meetings will be accepted in the following manner. Public comments will be accepted until 3:00 PM the day of the meeting. Written comments may be dropped off at the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at YMayfield@CityOfTaft.org, made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222, and the comments received will be read into the record. Item three, should a member of the public prefer to speak during the live portion of the meeting, shall contact the city clerk prior to the time listed above and provide a contact phone number, be available during the meeting time of 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, will be contacted at the phone number provided and placed on speaker to address the commission during the meeting time. This is now the regular meeting. Would you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance? Jerry, would you lead us?
Yes, ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't have a member of the clergy present, I'll go ahead and do the invocation. Heavenly Father, we come before you to do this business for the City of Taft that we are requested to do. Guide and direct our comments, our attitudes, and our outcomes so that they're pleasing to you and in the best interest of our community. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Roll call.
Chairman Orrin?
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Here.
Commissioner Banner?
Here.
Commissioner Laika?
Here.
And Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Item one is citizens' requests slash public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. Have we anyone?
No, Chairman.
Because we are a closed meeting. Okay.
Oh, no phone calls or other written communication wanting to speak.
Item number two is the minutes from July 8th, 2020, regular meeting. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That carries on a 5-0. We are on item three, public hearing, time extension number 2020-08. Mr. Staples, you have a staff report to present to us at this time?
Yes, Chairman Orrin. As you mentioned, the item before you is time extension 2020-08, and this is a bit of a unique time extension compared to the one you approved for the Jack-in-the-Box meeting or two ago. The project applicant, John Gallagher of G.G. Store LLC, is requesting this time extension of the adoption of Resolution 2007-09 and approval of conditional use permit number 2007-01 in order to complete the approved fifth-phase expansion, which is approximately 1.2 acres of three and a half acres of the existing storage bin mini-storage site located on a 10-acre parcel within the general commercial zone district at 1124 Fourth Street. The project site is mostly a vacant parcel northwest of the intersection of Second Street and Highway 119, with most of the parcel containing the full length of Sandy Creek along the northern property boundary between Fourth Street and 119. On May 3rd, 2007, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2007-09, approving General Plan Amendment 2007-01, Zone Change 2007-01, and the project conditional use permit number 2007-01. The General Plan Amendment and Zone Change amended the land use designation from median-density residential to general commercial, and the zone district from single-family residential to general commercial. Subsequent amendments to the General Plan and zoning ordinance revised the land use from general commercial to just commercial, and the zone district from general commercial C2 to general commercial GC. The approval of conditional use permit number 2007-01 permitted the construction of the fifth phase of the development of the storage bin mini-storage, including long-term vehicle storage with some of the spaces covered. This fifth-phase expansion involved approximately three and a half acres of the 10-acre site, as I mentioned before, of parcels 032-020-27. The construction of this fifth phase completed some of the vehicle storage area with the majority of spaces being covered, with approximately 1.2 acres remaining to complete the phase. The overall development of storage bin began with the city council adoption Resolution 1652 on June 18th, 1985, approving Precise Development Plan Number 21. The second through fourth phases of the storage bin development were approved in 2002, four, and five, respectively. The project site has been historically addressed off of Fourth Street, as that is the main access point to the mini-storage site. The proposed time extension will enforce the conditions of approval, which include the in-state installation of emergency access gate per the fire standards, and that's one unique thing is, at the time of the approval back in '07, we still had a Taft Fire Department, so they'll have to go through Kern County Fire to provide that emergency access gate and then probably the Knox lock that is required of most emergency access gates for fire access, since the site stretches all the way from Fourth to nearly 119. Typically, a time extension request is made during the applicable one-year approval time period, provided the conditional use permits. Per Section 6-2-18 of the MISL Code, extensions may be granted if it is found. The extension will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. As the project has completed approximately 2.3 of the 3.5 acres of improvements, it is anticipated that granting the time extension and the completion of the improvements will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, nor materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. It's recommended that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution granting the 12-month time extension on the approved Resolution Number 2007-09 till August 5th, 2021, with all conditions of approval in full force and effect. Per SEQA, this project had a negative declaration adopted with that General Plan Amendment, Zone Change, and Conditional Use Permit in 2007, and the copy of that filing is attached to your staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions you may have. We do have the applicant, as I mentioned, John Gallagher, and his engineer, John Wilson. So do your best in differentiating between John and John. So I'll take any questions you have now. Otherwise, we can open the public hearing and take comments if you have anything from, want anything from Mr. Wilson or Mr. Gallagher.
Have we anyone that has expressed an interest outside of?
I have not. We did send the public hearing notice to the property owners within 300 feet of the site, and I have not received a phone call or an email regarding this project.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner comments?
Just a quick question. I marked expecting this. Condition three, back when this was done in 2007, included landscaping along Highway 119 and a fence. The fence is in, it looks like.
Yes, so if you see the vicinity map provided showing where the site is located, as I mentioned, the entire parcel is 10 acres, which is everything from the alley that runs along the backside of the homes along Bell Avenue, all the vacant property from there to Highway 119, and the entire length of Sandy Creek to the west to Fourth Street. So all of that is 10 acres. So this conditional use permit approved development on three and a half of those. I created those blue boxes you see on the aerial map there, showing the 2.3 acres that's complete, although you'll see the aerial doesn't show the current paving that's under part of that, and then the 1.2 acres to the south. What they've completed thus far does have fencing with screening slats, so the vehicles and other storage on the site is screened from view. This would continue with the additional paving area. The requirement for the further screening while landscaping along 119, I would defer that to the finishing of this project, which would be the remaining four to five acres that you see that is vacant to the east. And you can have this discussion with Mr. Gallagher, and his discussion with me is that his intent is to come back with the application that would finish the paving of the site to provide more RV and other vehicle storage on the remainder of the site, particularly providing spaces that are larger to accommodate the larger RVs and other toy hauler fifth wheels that are a little longer that may not make it all the way under the covers that are provided on the storage bin as we speak.
Does that mean that he would need to come back with a new CUP for that, or would it again be an extended?
It's a new CUP. I gave the summary version of how the storage bin has grown over time, but as each segment and probably as each demand growth has come to Taft, the storage bin applied five different times for the different segments, all the way from Fourth Street to what you see today.
And it appears the intent was always to wait till last to do the screening along 119.
Correct.
Okay. And that, so that condition, we need to make sure stays with the next CUP as well?
Yes. Screening is required either through the slats they've done now, and when we do get there, that application will involve Caltrans more because of the adjacency to 119, the intersection of Second Street and all that, and we've discussed that with Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Wilson as engineer, that that would be a part of the review process. So we'd get input from Caltrans if there's a further application review through them, if there's a potential intersection alignment, or if they would keep it as is, and then any kind of fencing or landscaping improvement may go through an additional review through them potentially.
Because that's essentially the only landscaping along 119 on the Taft border that doesn't exist.
Yes, there's maybe one or two dead trees, but...
Yeah, well, that's fine. I mean, the idea is that I want that completed.
Right.
So if it's not out of this one, we need to make sure that it carries over to the next CUP.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? No, okay.
If not, you can open the public hearing, and then if you have any questions or want to hear from Mr. Gallagher or Wilson.
Okay. The public meeting is hereby opened.
Mr. Gallagher? Yes?
Do you have any comments you'd like to make to us, or does our discussion bring anything to your mind at this time?
Mark, I have to apologize. I can hear Mark pretty well, but any of the commissioners that have spoke, I have not picked that up. My location isn't good, and my hearing is marginal. I explained that from the start, so I'm going to defer to John on any of this stuff. I got the general overall, but I apologize, I didn't get some of the meat of what the commissioners were saying. I apologize.
Yeah, this is Wilson. We have no comments or questions, other than to recommend approving the 12-month time extension.
All right. I have no questions. You've outlined it well, so they're going to be back for the final eventually, and that will include the landscape on 119.
Well, they're focused on getting this finished, this phase of the project, and then when they move to the next step, there would be a new application involved.
Right. Okay. It's been a long process for that development, not necessarily this developer, but that development's been long-term, so.
Yeah, so we can close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Public hearing? Okay, is hereby closed. Looking for a motion?
You want me to make it? I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft Approving Time Extension Number 2020-08 to Extend the Adoption of Resolution Number 2007-09, and Approval of a Conditional Use Permit Number 2007-01 to Complete the Current Phase Approximately 1.2 Acres of the Approximately 3.5 Acres of an Approved Expansion of the Existing Storage Bin Mini-Storage Located on a 10.97-Acre Parcel in the General Commercial Zone District at 1124 Fourth Street for an Additional 12 Months to August 5th, 2021."
Second.
I think you did.
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear you, John.
You couldn't hear me either.
I gotta plug dear too today. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. This needs to be a roll call? Okay.
Commissioner Laika?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Banner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes.
And Chairman Orrin?
Yes. I didn't hear the vote. Is that a 5-0 or 4-0? 5-0. Okay, thank you. It's hereby approved.
All right. Thank you, John and John. Project's approving will, I'll follow up with you gentlemen tomorrow or within the week. All right. Thank you, everybody. Wilson out.
Thank you, guys. I apologize for my inability to hear well.
It's quite all right, John. Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to item four on the agenda, public hearing, site plan review number 2020-04. Mr. Staples?
Thank you again, Chairman Orrin. As you mentioned, the site plan review before you is a proposal by the applicant, Capital Rivers Commercial, for a new approximate 18,000-square-foot grocery outlet store and a 4,214-square-foot retail pad on a 3.13-acre parcel within the mixed-use zone district on the south side of Supply Row, approximately 200 feet east of 10th Street. The proposed project is located on formerly city-owned vacant property, which is part of the area commonly known as Rails-to-Trails redevelopment area of the city. As part of the redevelopment of the Rails-to-Trails area, the city sold approximately 1.6 acres of the land west of the project to Capital Rivers as part of the Develop Dollar General project in 2018. Furthermore, the city and Capital Rivers have agreed upon the sale of this project's 3.13 acres, approved by the city council on November 19th, 2019. The proposed grocery outlet site is a vacant parcel surrounded by vacant land to the north, across Supply Row, industrial businesses, Brown and Reich, and Homes Western to the east, the new Dollar General commercial, which is completed to the west, and with a mix of commercial and single-family residential uses, to the south across Front Street. The proposed 18,000-square-foot grocery outlet store includes approximately 13,000 square feet of sales floor area, but the remainder of the building is dry and cold storage, restrooms, break rooms, and the office area. The site design provides two main driveways along Supply Row, one from the south along Front Street, and two drive-aisles that connect to the Dollar General site to the west. The new building will have an architectural design that includes predominantly brick and masonry elements. The building is situated along Supply Row, maximizing visibility from 10th Street. The 4,214-square-foot retail pad does not include preliminary design, which will require a future site plan review to ensure consistency with the architecture of the project. Taft zoning ordinance, Chapter 14, Table 14, identifies general retail uses as required to provide one space for every 215 square feet of building area. The grocery outlet and the retail pad are required to provide a minimum of 89 parking spaces, of which three are handicap-accessible spaces. The project proposes to provide 105 parking spaces, of which six are handicap-accessible spaces, five future electric vehicle spaces, and seven clean-air van pool spaces, with those EV and van pool spaces along the southern building edge closest to the building. The applicant submitted their site plan review application plans on the May 21st, 2020. The application, project proposal, building design, and parking layout are identical with site plan applications submitted in 2019. The slight change is there's fewer parking spaces as they change some of the alignment. You'll see the long row of spaces going east-west. The current topography of the site has the pad building on the higher level along Front Street and the grocery outlet on the lower level along Supply Row. The project was found to be consistent with all the development standards of the mixed-use land use designation and zone district. The proposed project was moved on to the Planning Commission for review and approval, and you see the table there showing how the project complies with the mixed-use zone district standards. Regarding SEQA, the project is exempt from SEQA guidelines set forth in Section 15332, the SEQA guidelines regarding infill development projects. The attached categorical exemption memorandum dated July 2020, prepared by Rainey Planning and Management, outlines how the project meets the five criteria to qualify for the Class 32 categorical exemption. The memorandum is supported by technical studies and analysis of potential cumulative impacts and confirmation that none of the exceptions to categorical exemptions apply to this project. That concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions you may have. As I mentioned, this project is identical to the prior application that reviewed earlier this year. I do have three gentlemen on the line. Greg and Gary, you met during the Planning Commission review before. Scott Toussaint, you see there, was in the audience as well, representing the project. And then Nick Papani is the third one there with the phone icon. He prepared the SEQA document that you have there, so if you have any questions on the memo or the studies, he'd be able to answer those questions, but as you can see, Greg is available for any comments you have. But we'll start with comments you have for me first, and I'll see if I defer them off to Greg or Nick.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Commissioner comments, questions?
Yeah. You know, this wouldn't be me reviewing a project if I didn't find a type over to say the question, and I'm assuming it's correct. Table 4-2 and the map at Exhibit 4-3 don't match.
Call out a page number.
Page 33?
Of the memo?
Of the urban crossroads memo.
Okay, page number again?
33.
33 and?
Page 33 and the prior page, page 32.
Okay, so...
It's also in the narrative, but those are the two points where...
Well, I believe what we have there is the Table 4-2. Oh, okay. I see what it is. So the minor correction is that the table identifies 7-Eleven as T1 when it's T3?
Yeah.
And then Jack-in-the-Box says T2 is actually T1? And then O'Reilly Auto Parts is identified as T3 is actually T2, so there's just a rearrangement of the labels.
Also on page 30, they identify the wrong table number in the second full paragraph. I think they're identifying it as 4. I've covered it over with the right one, so...
So that second paragraph?
Listed in Table...
Okay. 4-2?
Yeah. I know there's a minor, but I...
Okay, so it's just the table reference there?
Yeah.
Instead of 4-1, it's 4-2. Okay?
The minor, but I, you know me.
Yeah, get your references...
Get them right, please.
Yeah. But I believe...
Everything else is accurate. I mean...
Applicable table, applicable map is there.
And I have some questions about that, but I'll wait till we get to the SEQA.
If there aren't any other questions for me, we can open the public hearing and hear from Greg.
Any other comments, commission members? Susan?
Well, I do wonder why they think it's going to take till 2022 to complete the project.
And I think if, I don't know if Greg is versed in it, but Nick, I think the references to, I think in the studies, there was just an assumption that the development would take two years from approval to completion, and that's where the assumptions are for construction, emissions, or other review, and then operational.
So we're not going back to when I first looked at this, or...
Well, I think, Nick, if you could give a general overview of how studies are done and why those parameters are set to determine the air and other impacts.
Sure. This is Nick Papani with Rainey Planning and Management. Good afternoon. Mark, is the specific question related to the traffic study in the 2022 near-term scenario?
Well, I think what it is, is just that it describes it as assuming that the project wouldn't be developed and completed for two years, but Greg and his development team could actually get a permit soon, get his contractors up and running, and probably get this done in, I don't know, 12 to 15 months. But, you know, some of the studies or other, the memorandum probably mentions whatever point in time that either traffic study or air quality studies say, okay, the construction impacts are up until sometime in 2021, and then operational is until sometime in 2022.
Yeah, it might help to just kind of go over the fact that we have a few different scenarios in the traffic study. We do have a 2020 scenario where we look at building the project and adding that traffic onto the existing volumes out there, and then they did have that near term, it's how they term it, 2022, and that only enables them to pull in a few other projects that are in the pipeline right now, and also account for some background growth. I think they used approximately 2% per year background growth, and so it just enables a more conservative analysis. So they have actually two traffic analyses that they've looked at, both existing plus the project, and then the near term out to 2022, just to look at a little more conservative assessment where additional projects in the pipeline are pulled in. And under both of those scenarios, there were no traffic impacts in terms of conflicts with the city's level of service standards. Does that help?
Thank you. Yes.
I can address the actual construction time period if that's something you want me to speak to.
Are you curious how long the project will actually take?
I am.
Okay. That's Greg. He can cover that.
Good to see everyone again. We're back here again. But realistically, I mean, it's probably about an eight-month construction period, and we'd like to get started. like to get started as soon as we can. So, um, and we have a, uh, you know, we're targeting, uh, mid twenty twenty-one opening.
That sounds much better.
Yeah, assuming everything goes, goes as planned.
Thank you.
Um, I have some technical questions, if this is appropriate. Uh, I noticed when you're doing your cumulative projects, you've got seven eleven with, uh, twelve pumps. So you're, are you testing it as if it is a brand-new project since they're actually reducing square footage on the site, but they are adding pumps? So I'm just curious if you're, you're testing if it were a new project, which would actually, I think, um, be more conservative. Not asking you to do that, I'm just asking if you did that.
I think that would be for Nick.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not fully hearing the.
So on the, on the traffic study, um, the projects listed, uh, four projects coming up is seven eleven, Jack in the Box, and O'Reilly, which are the other approved projects that I forwarded to, so your, um, engineers can, uh, run their models. Um, I think the question is, uh, the detail of the pumps and square footage of that site. Um, I'll let the commissioner finish that.
Let me try that again, Nick. Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, it's just a little harder, but, uh.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Okay, I, I'll shout if I have to. Um, the, uh, the seven eleven project is actually a, a rebuild, so they're expanding their, um, the number of pumps, but they're reducing the actual square footage of the retail space. So I was wondering how you actually tested it. I didn't catch it in the study. I'm sure it's there. I just, I'm a lawyer, not a traffic engineer. Um, so what I'm trying to figure out is, if you did it as if it were a brand-new project, that actually would be a more conservative estimate than what's probably there.
Yeah, it, it is, it does end up being a more conservative estimate, you're correct.
Okay.
In terms of some of the subsequent potential changes. And again, we also have that background growth rate, not, not just the three projects that are in the pipeline, if you will, but also we've added a background growth rate, so to capture any other, you know, potential changes that, uh, could occur over the next two years. So I think that the bottom line is, yeah, basically, we have a conservative traffic assessment, um, over the next two years, and analysis shows that there would be no level of service impacts at any of the nearby intersections.
I, I think that that was one of the concerns that was raised last time as far as the in and out and the traffic flow onto Front Street, because it's not as a, as developed as Supply Row is. And so to see that there's the two driveways on Supply Row as far as entrances is, I think, important for the project.
I think that's the only question I really had about, about the traffic study.
Okay.
Bob, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Nor do I. Okay, at this time, um, I'd like to open the, uh, public meeting.
Um, I have received no communication by phone, email, or otherwise regarding this project. We did, uh, send notices to the same property owners as we did, uh, last time, um, and, uh, I received no feedback on, uh, any. I did reach out to, uh, the one property owner that did show up to a number of the meetings, and he just generally gave his same, uh, support as he did before, uh, looking forward to the project. And I think we have, um, general, uh, improvements to Front Street, which was his main concern. Um, but once he found that the project would finish the curb gutter and sidewalk along there, similarly how Dollar General did, you have that complete street along there. Uh, that was his main concern.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, I'd like to close the public portion of the hearing and, uh, request a motion to adopt a resolution.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution entitled, "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft Approving Site Plan Review Number Twenty Twenty Dash Oh Eight for an approximate eighteen hundred square foot, pardon me, eighteen hundred, I said eighteen thousand square foot grocery outlet store and future four thousand two hundred and fourteen square foot retail building on a three point one three acre parcel located in the mixed-use zone district of the south side, Supply Row approximately two hundred feet east of Tenth Street."
Before we have a second, I'm going to request, uh, one amendment to your, uh.
Get the wrong?
Motion. No, uh, it's, it's purely a typo. If you look at page two of the resolution,
I missed.
No, it's my miss. Uh, I meant to remind myself to remind you sooner than this. Uh, number six, so the fourth item down, it says the proposed amendment. It should say the proposed project. We've made that change to the official document that the chairman will be signing. Um, so that's just the correction. It's, this is a project, not an amendment, uh, to the zoning code, so.
Okay, so then adding to the, the motion, um, a correction to.
Finding number six.
Yeah, finding number six, rather than saying proposed amendment, it said, should say proposed project?
Correct.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Shannon? Roll call?
Commissioner Lycam?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Banner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes.
And Chairman Orrin?
Yes. That carries on a five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, Scott, and Nick.
Good luck, Greg.
Yes, good luck.
Glad to see it happen.
Here with us.
And I'll be following up with you, uh, tomorrow on, uh, finishing this up.
Sounds good. Have a nice evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
That moves us to item five, Planning Director Report. Mr. Staples, you have a report?
Yes, let me change this here. Um, just a brief one in that, uh, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we're going to have a special planning commission meeting two weeks from today on August nineteenth. Um, I had mentioned there was a project with a sizable environmental document, and it will be bigger than the one you just received for the grocery outlet project. So I wanted to, it, the timing actually worked where I couldn't make this meeting anyways. So it was going to either be the special one two weeks from now or the one in September. I wanted to keep it as the sole project, um, because the, the memo summarizing everything is longer. It has like double the studies that this grocery outlet project had. So, um, we may be calling you even sooner to have the actual document ready for you, similar paper copy, so you can have that in front of you and make notes on it. So instead of having a motion to set that meeting date, the city clerk, um, did direct me just as a reminder to you, as we actually do not have to go through that formal action to set it. Um, I just need to let you know that that will be coming, and when the public notices go out, that is the notice of the, uh, meeting being set.
Excellent.
And, uh, I guess I could give a brief, uh, um, I guess you could say economic development update. The four commercial projects that you have acted on are in process. Grocery Outlet is going to be right behind with this, working on their permit. Um, uh, the O'Reilly's is approved. Um, Jack in the Box has their plans in for plan check, and as does, uh, the seven eleven project, as you mentioned. So they're all moving forward with their project. So we may have some, uh, busy construction times ahead, um, even though we're a little slow on, with the COVID stuff. So, um, I think that's a positive sign that things are still moving forward, even though we're, um, slowed down a little bit here. And I'll leave it at that with my, uh, planning director's report.
Very good, thank you. Let's say Mr. Efferson's next, the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No statement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Efferson. All right, that, uh, turns us to commission comments, uh, statements, concerns. Susan?
I just think it's pretty exciting, all these things finally coming together and happening, and I commend everybody for a great job. Great job. Especially Mark.
I'm particularly happy that they brought back the grocery store, because that's usually a volatile project.
Yeah.
To have, have it turned down.
Yeah, it was, it was. Shannon?
Um, I would just like to say that, um, I want everybody to kind of, this is more the parenting side of me, is that, uh, as we navigate the next couple of months, that everybody be nice to each other and to their students and the teachers and everybody that's having to deal with the back-to-school type stuff. And, you know, we know it's a frustrating time for not only the teachers and the administration at all the school districts, but also for the parents and the students. And, uh, trying to remain positive and optimistic, I think, is going to be the thing that's going to be able to kind of move us forward. So I just wanted to encourage everybody to try and put a smile on your face, even if you don't agree with what's being done or how it's being handled, because, you know, there's no real right answer, and we're all in this together, so.
Well said.
Is that your total?
That's, that's my total comment.
Okay. Well said. I too am very pleased to see that they persisted with grocery outlet. I, I don't like them when you pull shenanigans, we're, were pulled on them, not by any of our staff or our community members, but outside forces. Um, Shannon, I didn't hear whether or not you mentioned the, oh, men, uh, cruise night?
Oh, yes, um, thank you. We are having a, um, it'll be published within the, by Friday, but next Friday, uh, school starts on the thirteenth for the high school, for Taft Union High School. Um, and then on Friday, we are going to do a back-to-school, uh, cruise night on Center Street. So it'll be on the fourteenth. And then, uh, Taft City School, I believe, I believe starts on the seventeenth. So it's kind of right in between the two. Uh, but we just want to encourage everybody to kind of just come out and celebrate and, you know, remind people that it's, that it is back-to-school, even if our students are not able to actually go back to school at this point in, in classrooms.
Okay, thank you. Well, with respect to schools opening, I think we need to be cognizant of the kids are going to be excited, even though they may not be in attendance at the schools. And, uh, I am, uh, embarrassed and saddened for us because we have lost local control, rather than being able to operate the system that we send our children to at our discretion. We're having a mandate from on high, which, um, precludes us, um, using our autonomy and our freedom. I'm, I'm very hopeful that, uh, we turn this around quickly and come back to local control. We know what is best, and our professionals know what is best for us, not someone four hundred miles away. Um, that's the end of my comments. So now, are we going to appoint Jerry, even though he's not supposed to?
Did I volunteer not to go again?
I believe his, uh, appointment to, um, present before the city council still stands from the last live planning commission meeting we have. So once he's able to attend a council meeting.
It's in perpetuity until he.
It will hold until that first council meeting is reopened to the public and to Mr. Livingston.
So in the meantime, I just volunteer not to come.
Good job, Jerry.
Yep. Very good. Okay, that, uh, concludes, uh, our business at hand. We just need a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I was reading a note here. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? There. Thank you.